The project applicant is Wild Diamond Vineyards LLC, providing additional opportunity for the public input regarding a draft environmental impact report, EIR, for the proposed Wild Diamond Vineyards project. The project is located as 15087, 15591, 15663, and 15807 Spruce Grove Road, Middletown, and further described as APN 01306004, 07091011, and 12. And you're not paying?
I'm not paying, but...
Where did you do it?
Sorry, buddy. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Yeah, we're all on the phone here. We do have a full staff here at the table. Joshua Doris will be addressing now the overall major use permit and project, and Peggy Vautal will be talking about the draft environmental impact report, as well as our consultant, Mark Chain. So, the purpose of this hearing today is to provide additional opportunity for public input regarding the draft environmental impact report and major use permit, Use Permit 1602, for the proposed project. So, there was a 45-day comment period in which we received quite a number of comments, and this is the first opportunity the public has had to hear the project and state comments regarding, in a public forum, in a public hearing. So, we will be doing that today.
And what are your motions today?
There will be no motions today. No decisions will be made today. This is essentially just hearing about the project and the draft environmental document that has been reached at this juncture. We are in hopes that the scheduled public hearing on August 25th, you then be directing staff for the final draft EIR, which is response to all comments. On September 8th at this juncture, we have scheduled time for expert witnesses involved in environmental report documents to be available to answer specific questions that may arise. And then we would be looking for a decision potentially on this project, embodied by September 22nd. So, you'll be given, and the public will be given, a sufficient time for question and answer, and public hearing on the project in its entirety. So, with that, I will be turning it over to Joshua Doris, who will walk through the role of the project.
Basically, here's the project. Here's the project location. I'm sitting in the map. As you can see, it's located...
Oh, Jim, that's up there. I can't see.
Basically, the Highway 29 South. Here's the Hidden Valley Lake subdivision. Here's Spruce Grove Road, kind of winds up in the air. Jerusalem Grade up here for those, familiar with those areas. Project site outlined in blue. And a little history of the project. In the year 2000, the grading permit was approved for clear of 68 acres. And of those 68 acres, there's an existing vineyard, up 41 of them, and the remaining 27 have been cleared for vineyards. So, they essentially have cleared all the lands dispatched here. They've basically done it in phases, but all 68 acres of that have been cleared. And in January 2014, they filed another grading permit application for additional 43 acres of vineyards. And with that application came a sequel initial study, and a mitigated NICO declaration was prepared. And that decision and appeal was filed, went through some processes, and subsequently the applicants on their, decided...
Go on, Jimmy.
The appeal was filed, and based on that, the applicants volunteered to prepare a environmental impact report. And in February 2016, a use permit application was filed for that, for the current project. The proposed project includes planting additional approximately 80 acres of vineyards, a major winery production and storage facility with up to 52,800 cases per year, construction approximately 11,000 square foot tasting room, provide small vineyard tours, provide 35 special events per year, including amplified outdoor sound. And another part of that is have self-guided, their self-guided interpretive center is part of this use permit proposal. And just as a reference, there's approximately 32 facilities, either wineries and/or tasting rooms within the county. And anything larger than 15,000 cases a year is considered major. For reference, there's Shannon Ridge Winery. They produce about 108,000 cases of wine per year. And then the other three large ones are Rasfield Steel and Langtree Vineyards, and they're producing over 52,000 cases of wine per year. So, it's just a little perspective for you. And here is the site plan. I can't see a whole lot of detail, but here is Spruce Grove Road would come up here. Here's the current access into the site. The proposed tasting room is in this area here, and then up in this area is the proposed winery. And then also at the entrance, that's where the interpretive center is proposed to be located. And here's an aerial of the site. The imagery is a little outdated. It's from approximately 2012, but again, Spruce Grove Road outlined in red, project entry, and then here's part of the existing vineyards in production today. And then, so down here, that's the upper reaches of the Hidden Valley Lake subdivision, basically border this Eagle Rock Road, I believe, right here, Hidden Valley subdivision and more of this, the project site.
Excuse me, where's the event center in that? You mentioned the other facilities, not the event center?
Well, the event center, proposed to be located, tasting room slash event center, is proposed to be in this area.
So, in the future, let's wait till the public comment. You can ask those questions. Otherwise, we'll have a bunch of questions in the middle. That's okay.
Aerial, and then as far as the land uses, we're like the parcel zone, RL rural lands, which allows agricultural use by right, including vineyards. And it also requires a major use permit for large wineries and related events, such as the application for us today. And surrounding land uses within a mile or so, agricultural, rural residential, as well as Six Sigma Winery and Event Center, Event Center there. So, as far as the zoning, again, here's the project site outlined here. Zone RL, there's 29, Spruce Grove Road. See, zone RL is part of the Hidden Valley subdivision. It's Hidden Valley here. And you see there's some rural residential, some ag directly north, some agricultural preserve zones up here, other rural residential, but it's predominantly rural lands as far as the surrounding zoning. And as part of the environmental review and analysis, as indicated before, in February, a notice of preparation was prepared, basically indicating we're going to prepare an environmental impact report. And the draft EIR was prepared, and the purpose of that is to identify significant effects on the environment and propose mitigation measures to reduce those impacts. The public review period ran June 1st through July 15th of this year. There's numerous public comments were received, and analyzing that EIR staff, other agencies, and third-party analysis found numerous inadequacies within that environmental document. And all the comments are provided in staff reporting, the draft environmental impact report appendices. So, basically, they're going to capture all those comments. And then, and again, summary, basically, today is there's no action to be taken. This is to provide the commissioners an opportunity to familiarize themselves with the project and provide additional opportunities for public input. And the proposed next public hearing is August 25th.
Just one minor change to Joshua's presentation. The original scheduled comment period was June 1st to July 15th. We had a little while getting our document loaded to the website, and so we, I gave, we offered a little bit more time. We considered June 6th as a date, but it was actually on the website, and so we allowed comments until July 21st, rather than July 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
So, with that, we're going to transfer to description of the project and the details of...
June, yeah. Mine, it's definitely a bit more.
Or do you want me to drive, or you want me to...
Good morning, Chairman Sutherland and Commissioners. My name is Mark Chain. I'm with SHN Engineers and Geologists, and I'm the Principal Environmental Scientist. And we've been hired to prepare and coordinate the preparation of the EIR for the project. That included not only our staff, but also other professionals in different fields that are contained in the EIR. As you see up there, this is the proposal. It's been in your packet. And as Joshua mentioned, he went through a bunch of time on the timeline. I'm not going to rehash the items for brevity this afternoon, but that is the project location right there. We do have an additional... So, the overall, this is the overall site plan, as we talked about before, in terms of the pieces that Paul does, which are being hard to see. As Joshua mentioned, there are elements in the proposal. One is the winery here, the new winery development adjacent to the existing agricultural barn and place they do their existing haul and trucking of wine grapes. The second location, thank you, Dan, here's the tasting room, is proposed. It's in an area that is part of the approved clearing that's been done for the vineyards right now. They have proposed that for different aspects of the project. Oh, thank you. I mean, roughly, there's some information generally in terms of the project. The winery, as Joshua mentioned, is 52,000 a.m. cases a year, which they require a major use permit. They're going to be looking for that as part of the project. It has a full production facility on site, so grapes are harvested on site. They're hauled to the crush facility at the site, processed, everything from de-stemming, their tank, their barrel, their wattle with a mobile bottling system on site. So, this is going to be considered a full production facility on the site right there. The location is right in here. A lot of this area has been, part of an area that's been cleared over different years for hauling of rock and debris and miscellaneous items for the existing vineyard. There's a little bit of new development out there with some grading, that's on the grading plan as part of the project. It's two buildings, and I will show you those buildings here. This is the current winery, proposed operation facility. It has a, two buildings, one primary winery production facility, one tank and barrel and facility. Crush pad is in the middle, in between here, in this location right here. This is the access road that goes down to Spruce Grove Road. This road is currently in place. It runs basically right through, right through this portion of the winery, right, proposed winery facility right now. On-site parking for staff that will be working in the facility, other visitors that come to the facility that want to come here to, for vendors and suppliers and different folks will be in here as well. And then this road is the access road, is currently in place. It goes up to the proposed tasting room up there. This site here, we're running two buildings, about 17,800 square feet total for the facility. So, that would be a proposed use on that piece there. Is it my hand? Try that. The tasting room is up that road there we talked about, coming in your location right here. It has on-site parking. It has an existing proposed kitchen facility, tasting room. There are some open tasting rooms here, some small rooms on the side for, the plan is to have your small meeting event there, open it up for some larger reception areas. This area here is been, the parking has been calculated, proposed for the uses. You've got enough parking space for all of the daily and larger wine site, wine visiting events. The emergency access is provided with cal fire, appropriate turnaround with fire access and water for that site. That facility there is around 14,000, below 14,000 square feet for the facility. It has different elevations here to show you. This is the overall site plan. This is what the, these are some examples the architect put in here, but here's what the existing terrain that you would see from the, from the tasting rooms out here, mountain range there, the valley, tasting room here, parking in this area. So, the conceptual rendering, it basically sits off the hill, and basically see the roof of it as you park and you walk down into the tasting room facility itself. Here's more of a detail of it, gives you a little side view. There's a small, almost a daylight basement down here that's used for storage of cases of wine, small food items that they need upstairs, just general facility items down here, but this is the main floor here. There's a deck, this has a deck on the outside, so people can come up the outside and see the views from there. Again, we've got different pieces. I won't be an expert on how it's set up by any means, how the architect does it, but it is set up to have an open floor in here for wine tasting and views out. And again, here's your, your smaller rooms, restroom facilities and kitchen facilities in there. We've calculated, the engineer that provided the water and wastewater system did all the calculations for on-site kitchen facilities, wastewater, dishwashing. So, we have numbers in the water supply demands. It's in the EIR that has the calculation for wastewater flows out of there for all the events, plus the daily tasting room facility events as well. And then, just briefly interior, again, this is kind of showing you the, the idea, I'm sorry. The idea of the open floor looking out in here is what they're proposing to do on the tasting room. Primary thing is happening on the single floor, but again, with the basement being the opportunity for storage of the site. You know, in terms of the exterior of the tasting room, landscaping is going to be minimized in terms of water usage, but not going to put a lot of grass in. And then, so, there will be some trees, provide some shading in the parking area and to screen out, just add some aesthetic value views in there, but it's not intended to be a fully landscaped development, because the vineyards will be on both sides of the tasting room itself. So, there'll be some opportunities there to see that. The other thing that they're looking at doing is there's a small area down by Spruce Grove Road, and this is the access coming down the hill. Spruce Grove Road runs out through here. Existing right now, there is an old walnut storage silo there. It used to have some on-site sales with the walnut orchard that's kind of in here in some different fashions. And so, what they're going to do is take that, try to retain as much of that as possible. And the architect has indicated they can, they want to utilize the silo along with kind of an open... Oops, sorry. The idea behind the, the facility is, the idea behind it, the interpretive center is provide some information to Lake County in terms of winery, the geology, the location. Thank you very much. Maybe there's somebody that has more technology than I do. And just provide an open atmosphere there for people to drive in and take a look at that. It's not going to be, have restroom, it's not going to be powered, it's not going to have, you know, facilities there. It's just a place you can stop off. We're going to have parking spots in there just for people to park as well. So, that essentially is kind of the layout of what's going on. And what I wanted to do today was try to just give you a little process in terms of where, where the project is at this point, located at, some of the questions that you may have, I'm available for. But essentially, I also wanted to go through just kind of the process in terms of where we're at with the sequel. As Joshua mentioned, the process that we've gone through in terms of the notice of preparation, receive of scoping comments, using those scoping comments, preparing detailed reports for that, preparing the draft EIR. Draft EIR is at, has been out for the public review period. And at this point in time, we're at that place where finishing up public comment with planning commission, getting comments, asking and responding to some of your questions as best we can today. But predominantly today, it's kind of hearing additional comments that come in. We're at a point where, once we're done with the, you know, public hearing side of it, when public comment gets closed, so we can take and collect all the comments. And I think that's kind of the goal for the project, is kind of get that, get through the review process so we can get that closed. Because until we can close public hearing, it's hard for us to continue to respond to comments in the final EIR. We have to have some kind of a cutoff period where we can say, okay. Comments will be coming in, obviously, but it is something we have to have a place that we can at least go through and say, okay, as of today, here's how to respond to those things. And so, that's kind of the program that we're looking at today. And my understanding for today is, as Audrey mentioned, you know, is we're not looking for decisions here. It's more of an informational meeting than here, probably some public hearing comments. I'm not an expert in all the, all the subject matters that's in the EIR by any means. That's why we have a whole series of other consultants prepare that, go try to answer many questions from other planning commissions I can. And my role is not to, I'm not here to respond to lots of different comments and questions, because I may not have any answer for that. So, with that, I think Joshua covered everything else in there. I think I'll just leave it up there and ask you, if you have any questions at this point. Thank you.
I have one question. Is this the project that we looked at about two years ago for a grading permit for 40 acres or something like that?
This is the same, yes, the same site and the same ownership. Yes.
Okay, then I'll open it up for public input. If you'd like to speak on this, please step forward and write your name on the pad and also state your name for the... Thank you.
My name is Lisa Kaplan, and I need to speak now because I have to go to work. So, I'm, I want to respect the process, and I want to respect the scoping meeting that you did in Middletown, Audrey. I think that was really important, and our understanding was that it's a public meeting and that we should have access to all of the materials. I also want to say that these kind of, I'm very concerned about this project, about the impacts it will have on water, on air quality, on runoff, on traffic, on safety, many, many issues, which I'm not going to speak to right now, because I actually feel like a solution, a long-term solution, needs to come into play, which is that there needs to be representatives from the planning, from the community, the concerned community, from perhaps the governance, that is, the supervisors, a supervisor could be there if it's in their district, and the people who are trying to move forward with projects to sit together and really hash things out so that we can come to agreements of how we can live together in ways that are tolerable. Because there's no question that there's going to be development, but it's how we develop that's important. Because I think that especially, I think for all of us here, but as a person who's rebuilding after the fire, and I just got my planning permit today, we are looking at what is the long-term vision for our county. And if people are going to be, you know, if Hidden Valley Lake, God forbid, was polluted by such a, by such an endeavor, we're going to lose a lot of residents. If people started getting sick and leaving, we would lose residents. So, we need to be thinking about all of our decisions with not just five years from now, but 10, 15, 20 years from now. And some of the ways that we can do that is by sitting together and coming to agreements about how we move forward in ways that are healthy for the people who live here and for the environment, which we all love so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the Principal Biologist with Northwest BioSurvey. While excluding out a current from the draft EIR, or natural resource assessment by project engineer, my company wrote biological resource assessment upon which the client's work is based. I want to talk about environmental consultants' role in this process briefly, because it's very important for that to be understood. Our role in this process is to serve as an objective third party charged with identifying biological resources within project area, identifying potential project-related impacts, and ultimately recommending mitigation, reduce those impacts to less than significant levels. Our work must remain impartial and uninfluenced by clients' desire to protect or to, for project approval. Having a client rewrite our reports to suit their own needs completely defeats the purpose of our third-party review. In keeping with my company's role, I'm not here to discuss the merits of this project. As environmental consultants, I'm sure you're aware, we can never be in a position of supporting or, or being opposed to a project. We're scientists. Our job is to present you with the facts that you can base your decisions on. I'm here to discuss the natural resource assessment submitted by the project engineer, SHN. It's frankly unusual for us to attend the hearing. Our work is usually done long before a project comes to a hearing. We've launched and moved on to other projects. In this case, we feel compelled to attend in order to address the way in which our work has been used here. We submitted under contract to SHN a preliminary, and that's an important word, biological resource assessment to the project engineer, to be followed by a final assessment once the required floristic level botanical survey was completed in late summer. What actually occurred is that the text, tables, and maps from our preliminary biological assessment were lifted from our document and placed under a new cover stating the report was prepared by SHN. What happened during that process is that any reference to the text, to the text's original authors was removed. All of our recommendations were removed and replaced. Any reference to this being a preliminary biological assessment was removed, and all of our text calling for follow-up biological surveys was removed. It's certainly acceptable, as I'm sure you're aware, for a biological resource assessment to be appended to an EIR and then heavily drawn on in the EIR biological resource section. However, I can honestly say that in my 13 years as a government biologist and 19 years as a consultant in the private sector, I have never seen a client's representative lift the text from a biologist's report, significantly modify it, and place it under their own cover. This would ordinarily be an issue between the companies involved. However, based on the way the work, how the work has been used and modified, we believe that it misrepresents and harms the objective science we conducted for this project, and ultimately harms the credibility of our company. As required when an applicant submits their own EIR for a project, SHN's EIR underwent third-party peer review. SHN's natural resource assessment, which is primarily our company's biological resource assessment modified, underwent peer review by Galloway Enterprises, a biological consulting firm similar to our own. We often fill that role ourselves. Although it's probably historic for someone who's undergone a peer review that's critical to work, I have to say that we concur with virtually everything that Galloway said in their critique of the natural resource section, most of which pertains to modifications made to our report, omission... made to our report, omissions and additions made by SHN. I prepared, and I won't go through it in detail, we can provide this in writing to staff rather than go through a point-by-point response to Galloway's review, but I do want to hit a few important points that I think are pertinent to the hearing. First of all, with regard to our recommendations, which as I mentioned were removed, one of them pertains to Canach Diamond Snida, a list one B plant that requires secret review. That was removed. It was replaced with SHN's review, and I think one of the important things this points out is, it's pretty clear from looking at these measures that they were not written by a biologist. The first thing they say, and these are really, Galloway has exactly the same comments. First of all is, of the three recommendations, one is to avoid individual plants. Any biologist would say, that's completely ineffective. Any sensitive plant is part of the community. The idea that you're going to separate out and isolate plants and leave those and take the community around them is completely ineffective and has absolutely no biological value. The other section or recommendation was to obtain a take permit. It makes it clear this wasn't done by any kind of biologist. This is a list one B plant. It only comes under secret review under section 15, 180D of the secret guidelines. It says that plants found, determined to be sensitive in the opinion of experts in the field, it should be subject to secret review, but it's not a listed plant. Clearly, you don't need a take permit for an unlisted plant. This would be clear to any biologist. And the third recommendation was to replant Canach Diamond Snida elsewhere. And there's a fundamental concept in rare plants that, that I think a lot of people sort of intuitively understand. What creates rare plant populations is rare habitats. If you think about it, if a rare plant could grow everywhere, it wouldn't be rare. The idea that you can take a sensitive plant and plant it like a gladiolus somewhere else is, is patently absurd, frankly. You really can't do that. You could create a garden, I mean, you could have a botanical garden that's taking care of it, water, et cetera, and do that, but it's, absolutely has no place as mitigation. And I'll skip through the rest of these, we can provide them. There is another point that kind of makes mitigation, which makes my point. Our, we did a full delineation of waters of the US pursuant to core protocol. It appears that that was misunderstood by the people that rewrote our work. One thing they refer to is other wetlands, which is, and Galloway points this out, that would be embarrassing if we'd made that mistake in our work. Wetlands, waters of the US under the core jurisdiction are divided into two categories. One is wetlands, and we're all familiar with those, you know, area that's at least periodically flooded with tulips and cattails or other wetland plants growing in it. And then the other category is sort of oddly called other waters, and that refers to streams, lakes, ponds, et cetera. Those have to be attached somehow to other waters of the US. They have to eventually float to the ocean somehow for them to come under core jurisdiction. Further than as other wetlands, it makes it clear that the person who wrote this was unfamiliar with the process and how it works. And I think, and I'm going to, on this last issue here, which is really core to the problems that occurred in this rewrite, and Galloway hits on this. The reviewer states that the survey procedures did not meet regulatory protocol. While proper survey protocol was used throughout, which we used, this was not apparent in SHN's version of our report. And I'll point out, point out three things here. First of all, they removed any reference to who did the work, and a botanical survey to meet health, fish, and wildlife's requirements has to say, who did this? What are their requirements? Did they know what they were doing? Do they have an education in this field? That was entirely removed as part of the process of removing any reference to the authors of the work. Well, they removed survey techniques, which is a critical part of how these are done. The regulatory agencies want to know how one of these reports was written and how the field work was done. And perhaps this was done, but there's no record, there's no indication in the public record. They provide no indication that additional surveys were carried out following our April 13, 2016 surveys. If not, then a required floristic level botanical survey pursuant to CDFW or protocol has not been carried out. And I have to say, if that's the case, as the field biologist and principal biologist who did the field work and wrote the report, I have no idea if there are rare plants out there or not. And the window for doing this work has come and gone at this point. So, you know, if this work has been done, great, they get a second chance. If not, where do you go with this? And to make this point clear, let me do two quotes out of our report that were removed. In the preamble, in the very introduction of the report, we state the following. This is a preliminary biological assessment with a client requested submittal in May 2016. Consequently, it does not contain a complete and seasoned floristic level botanical survey. As per client agreement, the report will be updated and completed with a full floristic level botanical survey in July of 2016. We couldn't get on the property. We were told that the work had already been done. We haven't seen it, but we have no idea if it was done. And finally, our second recommendation that was removed is, and I'll quote it, and it's on the heading of other sensitive plant taxa. Many plants with sensitive regulatory status that occur within this region and on the type of soils present within the vineyard property have late blooming periods, June through July. And Galloway points this out as well. They talked about slender orchid grass and Jepson's leptocytem, and plants we would have looked for. And in particular, we would have been looking for a number of phlaxids that are sensitive to grow in that environment that are late bloomers. We didn't get a chance to see if they're there or not. And we don't go on to say, until a floristic level botanical survey is completed for this project, a determination cannot be made regarding the presence of other sensitive plant taxa or for proposed mitigation. And that's all I'm going to, we responded to the other comments. Those are in writing, and I won't bother you with those, we can provide them to staff. But I felt it was very important, both for the content of this hearing and this process, and to protect my own company's reputation, that our work is not properly represented here. We've been in business 19 years. Our life's blood depends on when we say something is true, that it is true. And if it's not, that's the end of our reputation and the end of our work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a kid in my age that almost got, um, the, um, three from a homeowner in Hidden Valley, about a quarter mile down the hill. I'm concerned with a couple of issues, notably around water, secondarily around noise destruction, and third, the entire process of how determinations are made here. I'm kind of curious, how much new vineyard has been planted in the county in the last five years? Would you all have those numbers? And what's been the effect, if any, that has even been measured, on the water quality and the amount of volume that flows into Lake? I mean, you know, new vineyards are great for the most part. The wine's pretty good, it brings in tourists, dollars flow, taxes flow, but what are the impacts? Do we have any sense of what these new vineyards have, have affected water flow or quality in the last several years? Is there any baseline? Same thing for Hidden Valley Lake. I'm on that hill. There's an incredible, they're building a pool where they, where they wanted to develop this. I'm down at the bottom, just near Spruce Grove Road. There's an incredible amount of water that flows off that hill every year. Incredible amount. There's enough water that I can, after a third day of a rain, I can create a pelting wheel. I can put a pelting wheel in a little creek I can create outside, next to my garage, and generate enough electricity for my house. There's that much flow, and it goes several days after a rain. What's the, we have to know the effect on Hidden Valley Lake. All that water flows into Hidden Valley Lake. And, you know, before I feel good about, about a vineyard up above me, I want to know, I want a better sense of what the effect on the lake is going to be. Thirdly, the event center concerns me. I'm an old rock and roller. I love music, I love dancing, and I love going to events. And I'm also aware that Spruce Grove Road is probably taking in the amount of traffic right now that, that the road is graded, is rated for. How is, is Spruce Grove going to be upgraded if this project is approved? Will there be passing lanes? I guess that's all for now. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I live just to the west, at the top of Eagle Rock and Road. I was a research geologist for the USGS for 25 years. I've been teaching geology in Methodist State College for the past 15 years, so I'm interested in the geology of the area. I've published papers dealing with the geology and environmental history of Lake County that cover the last 40 years. I mean, that's how long I've been publishing them. They cover the last 115,000 years, but I won't go into detail for you, but here. And I'm speaking for myself, not as a representative of any other group, although people are free to agree with me, but I'm not speaking for them, and I'm not getting paid by anybody for this. I'm bothered by the behavior of Wild Diamond LLC. They're very secretive. They have taken a lot of trouble to make sure nobody knows who the hell this is. And the only thing we really know is that they are an LLC, limited liability corporation. They are planning a project which has very high potential, not promise, but potential for environmental damage, and they are a limited liability corporation. If anything goes wrong, we can expect them to vanish, and Lake County will be left with whatever has been done. Their behavior has been misleading and disingenuous. The whole idea of adding piecewise on the amount of land that was being cleared, bit by bit, while swearing they weren't doing that, is a good example. They clearly are representing a lot of outside money. They are used to getting their way, and when they get money out of this deal, the money is going to go away to wherever they are coming from. Thus, we've been able to hear is some lawyer in Miami, which is not going to benefit Lake County hugely. The impacts of whatever they do will stay here. These people don't follow the rules. They'll tell you whatever they think you want to hear, and then they'll go do whatever they want, and dare you to come and stop them. They've done this with expanding, they've always been ahead of what they were proposing to be allowed to have permission to do. It's been done by the time you say anything about it. And I see no reason to believe any promises they make in the future about, oh, we'll be good now. Now, turning to the DEIR. Clearly, I have been put off by them, and we'll just leave that there. But the DEIR is not a scientific investigation. They are not investigating the environment. It's a, it's a trumped-up attempt to justify doing what they want to do. They put this together, they, they said they were going to start doing it, according to what I just heard, in February. They had this several hundred-page document ready by July. You don't do that much work and produce that large a report as science in that amount of time. It takes a while to do it. The DEIR does admit upfront, they say, well, we looked at all this, and the best solution would be to not do the project. But we got a gotcha in there that the legislator left in. We're allowed to look for a less benign solution that would allow us to do what we want anyway. They say this right upfront in their DEIR, and I don't like that. You know? If the best solution is not to do it, maybe we should consider that as one of the possibilities. Why not do it? Or why not do it slowly? I think the big problem that I see is water. We are in an unusual situation. We are, between Spruce Grove Road and Highway 29, we have a big ridge. They are right in the middle of that. The water on that ridge comes entirely from rainfall, and it falls on this frosting of young volcanic rocks. The reason we have all those cinder cones and lava flows, that's young stuff that's about a million years old. And water gets into that, this is like a cap, and then it slowly dribbles out around the edges. We're not talking a groundwater basin here. You think groundwater, you think a place where the water runs in and collects in a low spot and you can pump that out, and you're fairly well assured of a replacement. We don't have that. We're on the top of a hill, and the amount of rain we get up there is not the 40 inches a year that they cited for Middletown. I have a rain gauge on my roof, which is, as I said, four or a mile west of their project, and we get about 40% the amount of rain that they get in Middletown. So water is scarce. The water that dribbles out around the edges from this aquifer feeds springs around the margins. Some of these are fueling the water table in Jerusalem Valley and the shallow wells out there. Others are down around Spruce Grove Road and the Hidden Valley Lake drainage. And those springs tend to run much later in the summer than the streams do. Certainly, when it's flooding, when you can run a pelting wheel, a lot of that water's going, it all has to go through Hidden Valley Lake, but a lot of it goes over the dam and is gone. It's the water that is left over after the water stops going over the dam that's important to maintaining Hidden Valley Lake. And if they're taking water out at the top of the system, that would otherwise be seeping out around the edges, there's going to be less water available around the edges, and there is no other way to get water in there, unless we want to run a pipeline that now goes up to the geysers, up to their vineyard. And I don't think that's a feasible alternative for any of you. So I think there is a very significant chance that if they start pumping all of their wells at once, they're going to lower the water table at the top of the hill, the people surrounding them, and Hidden Valley Lake itself are going to get a lot less water, and that is going to have strong effects on property values and on the livability of the area. So my recommendation, my personal preference would be, well, let's just not do it. But if we're going to do this, we should start very carefully. We've got five holes. Let's make one of them a hole that we pump and make the other four into observation wells for a while and see what happens. If nothing bad happens, great, try two and three, and we can work up and it'll turn out that they'll have their project. But if it turns out that it starts angering their neighbors, then it would be good to stop that before it's in process. So that is my view on the water problem. I also have concerns with traffic, you know, with noise because of, that will be affected. Have you driven Spruce Grove Road recently? It's, it is a good 1930s rural road. And it's a terrible 1970s rural road, and it's an even worse 21st century rural road. And if you take a bunch of people who have gone to one of these special events, chances are they will have wine available for these special events. They have a winery, and if you put them back on that road, not entirely sober and not familiar with Lake County driving rules in general, there's going to be problems, which could include starting fires. A car goes off the road. This, this happens on occasion, so. And I don't know who's going to count the people who come to these big events they have. What do we do? What do we do when 500 people show up at a event? By the time we get the sheriff out there, I just don't see how it can be enforced. And if we do go ahead with that, you need to put some really rigorous record-keeping requirements on people, and then make sure that they get enforced. With the penalty behind breaking the rules being, you lose your permit for the whole wall of works. I'll stop there. I thank you for your attention. Thank you. Some of my notes.
My name is Jennifer Rollan. Just so I can give some perspective. This is the vineyard property here, and that's mine right there. Do you see that touching?
Yeah.
That's me. I just bought that property in November 2014. At the time, I didn't own it. There was a Wild Diamond Vineyard project. I learned about it in July. And I've been gathering a lot of information since, just to try to be kind of like in learning mode, because I'm pretty new to all of this. So bear with me.
Your name for us, because it's the first time, sorry.
My name's Jennifer.
Thank you. Your last name?
Rollan.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that. What's your last name? It's Rollan.
Thank you, sorry about that.
So I've been gathering some information on the wells from the neighbors, trying to figure out if anyone else is experiencing the issues that I have. For example, last year, as a new homeowner, I had a couple of little mishaps where I accidentally drank my water tank. It was like kicking pants, and I was like, oh, man. So I got started learning about it, figured out that the water tank actually filled up just fine within about a week, like the normal kind of a flow that I was used to. But this year, I had something happen where I came home from a trip, and it got my attention because when the water tank was mysteriously drained, it wouldn't fill back up at all. So I called out Duncan Pump, and they came out and checked the whole system. Checked all the piping. Everything's fine, there's no leaks. So it was like kind of mysterious. Still a mystery how that happened, but what it did was it put more intention on the situation for me. I was like, what's going on? Are other people's wells experiencing this, where it filled last year? And they won't fill this year. So I started learning. My well goes down 650 feet. I'm at 2,000 feet. It's top of the ridge. My neighbor their well goes down 400 and something feet. 10 years ago, they were flowing at 50 gallons a minute. Today, they're barely making it by. This property here, they have a well that goes down, I hear, 300 feet, but he's brought two trucks of water in in the last two weeks, just for his fruit trees and his family. I brought in a truck to refill. So there's definitely something happening in terms of the recovery rate, is I guess what you would call. And speaking with neighbors, what I learned is there's definitely a key timing that is emerging. That is, as soon as the vineyard stops watering in about late August, September, our wells just come right back to us. So I think that's something really important for us to look at, is how much is the water that they're using affecting the recovery rate of the wells that are surrounding and touching properties? That's my first concern. I think it would be great if we could have somebody get on this, like find out when did the people build their wells, where are they located? Because to learn that they drove three very close to my house very recently, and I wasn't even notified of that, I guess I'd need to look for them. Now I am. I feel like there's not a lot of information being made public. I actually called the owner of Wild Diamond, Robert Boeing. I spoke with him myself, saying, is there any way that we can work this out? I'm trying to learn what is this about? Are you having water issues? What's going on? And also, could you please just notify me if you're going to be spraying, so that I can make a choice to either remove myself or whatever's going on? Well, he said, yes, sure. I went, you know, I never heard word, and still I'm hearing the... I walked out, and I could see this truck spraying. When I left my property today, this is what it sounded like. It's like just this machine like going digging and stuff like that. So it's pretty much going on regularly. Thankfully, some of the neighbors have started to get attention, and they're documenting how often it's being sprayed, how often watering. So we can kind of like get some information for ourselves, since the vineyard doesn't seem to be willing to share it with us. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. That's the thing, neighbors are uncomfortable about this, because I guess I've learned that this has been going on for a little while. They knew about it, and they came out to me, and they don't feel heard. And don't feel like the time that we've invested is getting into the report. And so it's kind of like this powerless, defeated thing. And I'm like, well, okay, let's still not give up. Let's keep trying. It's not approved yet, right? It's not approved?
Right.
Okay. There's another vineyard in the area, very close, actually in the valley. And I think it's here. It's called Bad Rap Ranch. Bad Rap Ranch. You heard it good? They have grapes growing out there that were approved by the county. And the county, as I understand it, made them collect rainwater and have these big tanks to help preserve the waterway in the area. And they only have like 10 acres of vineyard, or some small amount. Like, I don't know exactly, but they definitely have vineyard, and they definitely collect water. And I'm curious if Wild Diamond could maybe have a system like that. I don't know much about it, but I'd like to learn more about how we choose the water gathering requirements from one vineyard to another vineyard in adjacent areas. Also, the speed on Spruce Grove Road. Now, I got to say, I drive this road a lot. And the speed limit is 40 miles an hour in some areas, which is just crazy, because there's no way you should be going around that bend at 40 miles an hour. If we have people on alcohol driving on that road, we have a big problem ahead of us. So I think we really need to look at the safety of people on that road. I have felt unsafe on numerous occasions. There's no dividing line on the road. There's a way higher speed limit than it ought to be. And with public events 35 times a year, something I need. This is really worth paying attention to. Finally, I want to come back full circle and say that the work is happening now. I left my property to come here. I ended up getting into a conversation. I was late coming, and got in a conversation with a neighbor. We both walked out there at the same time. We both heard the machines, we're like, what's going on? We pull out our video cameras. We're like, this is really interesting. Why is there a big excavator digging out rocks right now? So I don't have the answers. I have a lot, a lot of questions, though. And I'm hoping that you guys will keep us informed about what's going on more thoroughly, and maybe dig into this a little deeper, so we can really assess the impact of it. Thank you all for coming. I hope we can make a difference.
Thanks.
I have one question for you. How do you get to your property on Spruce Grove Road?
No, sorry. I go all the way around Noble Ranch, all the way, all the way, all the way around. It's like a spiral, almost. Should I show you a little better? Well, it's partly, it's not. So it comes kind of through like this.
So you don't use Spruce Grove Road as a regular?
I do. I can only reach Noble Ranch Road from Spruce Grove Road. There is no other way in. And furthermore, when the fires happened last year, it was really dangerous. And they had us gated in from Hidden Valley. Not like an intentional thing, but it was gated, and they had to cut the gates open, so we had a way out of the back. And there actually is a shorter way out from Noble Ranch through Hidden Valley. It's just closed for the reasons of the neighborhood, I understand. I, you know, I just accepted it because it was that way ever since the beginning. But when the fire came, it became more of an issue, because we had to go all the way out, and we're on this way to get out. And then we had to go through the fire road. So technically, there is like a dirt road, I think, that could get us out through Spruce Grove, but it's like a fire road only.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
My name is Steve Reber. I live in Hidden Valley. I have 40 years of experience in acoustics, both in laboratory and in the field. And so the comments I'd like to make today focus on the acoustic component of the draft EIR. And then I'll make some comments after that concerning the significance of the EIR in general, for not only our community, but for the county. Because I will not be available on September 8th, I do actually qualify as an expert witness. That's by virtue of information I have provided in my written input, and I can provide a CV. I've taught at the University of California, Los Angeles, UC Berkeley, University of Wisconsin, and Technical University of Denmark. My scientific citations are according to research rating in the top 10% of all scientific citations. I am a leader in understanding acoustics as they pertain to sound, speech, and music, and hearing in general. And so the comments I'm going to make today about the acoustics, I think, bear some warranting, because I've been quite surprised at the very primitive nature of the acoustics analysis. Sort of analogous in some ways to what someone just talked about in one of his slides. But I wasn't involved in the acoustic analysis. There are many flaws that actually don't address the actual acoustic impact to residents. Sort of analogous to what the speaker before me just gave you a recording of. And so if there's an opportunity on August 25th, I'd like to actually show some PowerPoint slides, because we're dealing with very, very technical material that words really can only go so far. I don't want to bore you with this. But there are flaws in terms of how the sound pressure level was computed. This is an elementary error. Given the 30-year history of the acoustics consulting firm and the 20 years of experience of the author of that acoustics report, it sort of raises questions in my mind, because surely they're aware of how you actually compute sound pressure level for human impact. And what they apparently did was to average over parts of the acoustic spectrum to get their final bottom-line estimate in areas that have no bearing on whether it has impacted humans here at all. So that's one of the flaws. Another flaw is that they didn't take measure of sound transmission in that environment. They essentially assumed that you have a flat ocean field and used the most primitive equation, which is the inverse square law, which has been known for over 100 years, without any addressing of reverberation, reflections, and so on. They also did not address what we call the modulation spectrum, which is essentially a way of looking at the fluctuations, the slow fluctuations of sound that emanate from machinery noise like the previous speaker played for you, which has enormous impact on people's sense of well-being that can't really be captured with traditional sound pressure level measurements. And the location in which they measured the sound pressure levels was way off on one edge of Eagle Rock, which is where the sound is most unlikely to actually be felt in the community. So these are all very serious flaws. And I would be glad if the planning commission, so likes, to present a detailed technical description of the flaws with PowerPoints on August 25th. But I'd just like to wrap up by saying there's something unique about this particular project, I think in the country. And that is that I don't know of any other major vineyard and winery development at this altitude, 2,000 feet, that overlooks a large population center directly below it. I think it is unique. And the potential impact, not only on the health of the being, but also on property values. And as you surely know, Hidden Valley Lake is the cash cow to the tax revenues of this county. Anything that severely impacts Hidden Valley Lake accounts for slightly less than 10% of the population, and is the largest center of quasi-affluence in the entire county, potentially also impacts negatively the county itself. So I urge you, when you consider all the different parameters here, balancing the economic benefits with the potential detriments, to take this into consideration. Thank you.
We're going to take a three-five-minute break.
First, I'd like to say that I agree with everything that David Adams said, who is the geologist. I've been talking to him about the situation for a while. And that's why I became so concerned and began to read the initial SEQA and the draft EIR, because I do believe that he's right about us being, that there's a cinder cone, and that the water drips down, and that feeds the wells, and then the springs feed the lake, and also the runoff goes into the lake. So when they are going to take, when this proposed project says that they are going to take 34.1 acre-feet of water each year to water their vines, that is, each acre foot is 320,000 gallons. So that's over 10 million gallons that they will use each year. And I never knew that there was another vineyard up there that is required to do catchment water. But I would think that if they are going to be allowed, that they should be catching water. And there are other mitigations, and I'm going to go into that, they should be required to follow in order to have a vineyard. Because, as David said, anyway, is that we don't know. And what we had hoped an EIR would do would be to answer some of these questions. But unfortunately, the other thing is that the source, that the sources they used to back up their hydrology report section of the EIR were not site-specific. They were what's called library work, where they collected data from different areas, but it really doesn't have to do with the area that we live in. And then they just assumed things and made conclusions based on this data that isn't specific to the area in which we live. And then I also studied the biology section, and I saw that it wasn't complete as the biologist said. But I was shocked by one of the references that they gave to the biology section, which I wrote about in my letter, because I just thought, how could they use this as evidence? They had a reference to a website online that was a database of animal and natural history, classification, and conservation biology at the University of Michigan. And it says that it's a compilation of texts and pictures of animals, photographs, movies, and recordings. And the part that is written about these is all student accounts, and they cannot be guaranteed for their accuracy. And I just thought, how could you use that when this is supposed to be a technical and professional document? And it's all written by students, and it's not accurate. And it's all written by students, and it's not accurate. So I am, of course, against the project, because I think it's lacking sufficient data to support the recovery of the aquifers after the removal of such a great amount of water, and that will negatively impact the people with wells around there and the lake, which is fed by springs. I also think, one of the mitigation things, if it were somehow to be permitted, should be that there should be baseline, they should, the county should provide this, or the developer should provide, that the people in the surrounding area, that their wells are tested for baseline, you know, depth and how much they produce. There, one of the maps that they gave with the EIR showed all the wells, and there are many, there are all these little black circles. It's kind of difficult to see, but there are all these little black dots all around. And those are the wells in the vicinity that will be impacted by this development. I wanted to share a few things that were brought to my concern. We consulted an attorney, because we've analyzed the SEQA and we analyzed the DER, but we've just been feeling that we haven't really been listening to that. Everything just goes forward, and it's sort of like, oh, well, what do the people think? You know? Kind of like, I feel a bit like Jennifer Rolland. It's like, what is this? I respect that you're here and that you're looking things over, but I also feel that perhaps the developer gets a lot of support, because that person has the money, and we're, we don't have money. So anyway, we have an attorney that wrote us a letter that pointed out a few things that are really important. A mentor of Chatton Brown and Carston said that "The SEQA requires full disclosure of a project's significant environmental effects, so that decision-makers and the public are informed of these consequences before the project is approved." And from the beginning, I went to the very first hearing that many of the people never came to. They said that this was just going to be 24, 16 acres from the ninth, they were going to add 40 acres. And at that time, they said it wasn't going to be anything more. But then we had found some pictures on the internet about much more, bigger development, and they denied that. And then, and that's what it turned into. So that's very interesting, and I think I have that bookmarked on my computer. And it was called the Well Done and, you know, Winery Event Center. She points out that instead of meeting SEQA's statutory purposes, the project attempts to hide behind a failure to disclose and analyze impacts to support its claim that this major project would have no significant impacts. Then she specifically addresses the water situation. She says that it fails to include a water quality assessment for the project, that there will be substantial concerns regarding the potential impacts from the project's runoff on Hidden Valley Lake, that the DER fails to assess whether the chemicals and fertilizers and pesticides and dust suppression subfactants that will be used would result in runoff that could impact the lake, that there are residents near the project site outside of Hidden Valley that rely on wells that could be impacted by the project, that the project's impacts on the water quality and flow rates of those, of the springs that also feed the lake must be assessed. She specifically mentions that the project applicant says they will no longer use Roundup, which is a step in the right direction, but then they are going to substitute something else, which I'll mention, but which is also very harmful. But unless there are proper mitigation measures prohibiting the use of this carcinogenic chemical, how can we be sure? I mean, we have to have follow-up mitigation. It appears that, like when we complain about erosion or burning of the plants, when it, when it just hangs over the mountain and everybody's having a hard time breathing, that nothing is really done about it. And she goes on to say that "The DER's analysis of water use is inadequate, and the appendices fail to provide an adequate water supply assessment." And this is where I think the site-specific data is missing. David Adams analyzed the hydrology section and said that, when you look through all of them, they have a lot of graphs and all kinds of numerical things that you have to calculate. And then he said, when he calculated it completely, and I think it may even say it in it, that they're going to take 48% of the water that is going in the aquifer area, and that's really a lot of water. All right.
Is this the letter that you are making available to us?
Yes, I can make it available to you. I think it's been submitted already, actually. Then it is, also, there are some other, that the DEIR fails to consider reasonable range of alternatives. And then she cites Goleda Valley versus Board of Supervisors, and under SEQA, the public agency bears the burden of affirmatively demonstrating that the agency approval of the project followed meaningful consideration of alternatives and mitigation measures. And then she covers some of those, and one of them is that, well, she says that the project has many significant or potentially significant impacts that are not analyzed. And she lists quite a few things, well, not really, it's just five points of how we could be impacted. And then the alternatives are that the project could plant drought-resistant roots, they could use, they could collect rainwater, they could go organic. There's a number of things that she outlines. And these less impactful alternatives might be all, or the majority of, the project objectives, which is all that is required from an alternative to be deemed feasible. And then she quotes some guideline. "This is true regardless of whether or not the project applicant favors those alternatives. The willingness or unwillingness of a project proponent to accept an otherwise feasible alternative is not a relevant consideration." And she cites a couple of former situations. So some of the things that we are suggesting, even the fact that they should go very, very slowly, or not at all, but that's hard to believe, but when I hear about the woman up on the hill and the wells going dry up there, and everything considered and there isn't site-specific data, I'm really disturbed that someone could just come in and say, well, because I paid for this great big giant DEIR, now it should be passed. So those are my greatest concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
John Moss. I'm reading the packet. I'm reading the Galway Enterprises Report. Page one. "Within the discussion on wetlands, the draft EIR states that the preliminary wetland delineation was conducted as prescribed in the Corps of Engineers Wetlands Delineation Manual, January 1987, and the interim regional supplement to the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual, Airhead West Region, 2008. This appears to be a misrepresentation, as the mapping provided in the draft EIR's figures do not meet the USACE's mapping standards, and there is no wetland delineation report or data sheets included as an appendix to the draft EIR." This technical person is criticizing the map. Aside from lacking, and page three. "Aside from lacking any mention of the state and federal regulations regarding impacts and mitigation for waters of the US, in the mitigation measure, there are bigger issues with the potential impacts and required permitting. Impacts to jurisdictional drainages over 300 linear feet or one-half acre of wetlands require permitting under an individual permit, which requires extensive consultation with the USACE and the EPA to determine the least environmentally damaging practical alternative." And later on down here, it says, "The proposed project and associated impacts to other waters of the US, without securing a 404 permit from the USACE and fulfilling mitigation and support of the agency's no-net-loss policy, would be considered a violation of the Clean Water Act." So to sum it up, these people want you to, want Lake County to follow the law. I live on Wellcat Road. Last year, people at both ends had dry wells. People above me had dry wells. They blamed it on the watering of the vineyards very nearby. It's not just happening at Hidden Valley. And people don't know where to go to get help. I believe that we can look at the facts. Vineyards create wine, wine is alcohol, alcohol is a drug. Can we really promote vineyards when children nearby didn't even have water to drink from their wells? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Brenner Sullivan. I am the executive director of the Lake County Farm Hero. And we submitted some comments during the public comment period. In the interest of time, I'll kind of gloss over what I was going to present and just address a few specific issues. We administer the Irrigated Lands Program for the State Water Board in the county, and part of our duty is to help farmers be in compliance with water quality regulations, specifically erosion control and surface water runoff off ag lands in the county. This program started in 2004, and in addition to supplying compliance information for farmers regarding best management practices for erosion control to protect against surface water runoff, the program also conducts surface water quality monitoring specific to ag lands in the county. So this project would, for the record, be, have to come under compliance with the Irrigated Lands Program, which would stipulate best management practices for erosion control to protect against surface water runoff. There are certain things like nitrogen management plans to regulate fertilizer used on the land, so that would all come under the umbrella of this regulatory program through the State Water Board. One last thing. In 10 years since the program, what started here in Lake County in 2005, in monitoring surface water quality, there's been minimal water quality exceedances for both pesticides and for nutrients, that includes nitrogen and phosphorus. So I just wanted to leave you with that information.
Thank you, Brenner.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Thomas Nickel, and I'm the director of the Scotts Valley Water Conservation District, Director. As a resident of Lake County for 57 years, I am appalled at what I see as I drive around this county. I fear for the future of this, of Lake County because of the out-of-control expansion of vineyards, and there seems to be no end in sight. Let me begin by clarifying this. Vineyard owners are not farmers. They do not produce anything needed to sustain life. Seemingly without any concern, up until now, with the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors' approval, vineyard developers have been given and will be given cartblaws to bulldoze, clear-cut, and destroy every possible square acre of trees and vegetation in this county, which supports our wildlife and the habitat. Mandating wildlife corridors is great when applied, but at the rate of this expansion, there won't be any habitat left for them to travel to. The additional loss of this vegetation in arid watershed areas that naturally prevented soil erosion and nutrient loading into our lakes is now gone. Currently, very little cover crops or none at all are implemented in these vineyards. Cover crops would be beneficial at holding in moisture and eliminating the need for Water consumption in some of these vineyards can be staggering if frost prevention sprinklers are used. It's been noted that the Russian River can drop as much as two feet when all the frost sprinklers in Sonoma County are turned on all at once. That could cause us serious consequences to arid aquifers, which are already strained when applied. Water conservation mandates have been implemented to communities around this lake. However, there seems no such mandates on existing vineyards, nor any moratoriums considered for the future vineyards that use the same aquifers as these communities. Seems like a very hypocritical policy to me. I foresee future water wars on the horizon if this expansion continues unabated, and it won't be pretty. The quote that whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting over may become a reality. In these proceedings, many attempts will be made by Ms. Brandon and others to dismiss any concerns about this project and place a positive spin on its economical benefits, including an endorsement of this project by the Sierra Club Lake Group. If you read the mission statement of the National Organization of the Sierra Club, it does not even recognize vineyards as agricultural-based entities, and most of its tenants would negatively apply to vineyard development. They seriously oppose monocropping, which vineyards are, as one example. Therefore, with no disrespect to Ms. Brandon, any endorsements by the Sierra Club, Lake Club, is a moot point. The economical benefit of these vineyards on the local economy is questionable at best. Most of the labor is brought in from outside the county and or McCannville, and there are no convoys of wine limos traveling around Lake County for wine tasting. The driving force to this expansion is none other than ag tax revenue. Currently, Napa County is ranked both in cancer rates and first in childhood cancer rates. Sonoma County is not far behind. So where will Lake County rank in the future? Ag taxes will not fill our aquifers, nor replace our wildlife, or not mitigate cancer. In conclusion, it's my opinion that most of the large vineyard developers who have descended or will descend on this county are nothing more than out-of-county, out-of-state, out-of-country carpetbaggers here to exploit our cheap land, our water, and our lax environmental controls while residing elsewhere with no sincere concerns of this county, just their pocketbooks. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Rubin, a resident of Hidden Valley Lake. I would like to express my concerns about future agricultural and residential development of Lake County in general, and the plans for commercial vineyard, winery, tasting room, and event center development of wildland vineyards right alongside Hidden Valley Lake. It's quite regrettable that the proximity of a commercial agricultural growing and processing project so close to a 6,000-plus residential community will be allowed to exist. The more we find out about the deadly hazards of pesticides and herbicides, the more our governing bodies should be mandating distances of at least a mile between them. This project should have been condemned from the very beginning, before the first eighty before the first 8 acres was allowed to be graded and planted. Wild Diamond Vineyards' five wells could potentially suck our local aquifers and streams dry and turn our hardly prized Hidden Valley Lake into a now. Further runoff of fertilizers from vineyards into the groundwater in Hidden Valley Lake can pollute the lake and adversely affect our amenities, our quality of life, and our property values. The theft, in my opinion, of groundwater for vineyards and wineries will hurt local residents, which is already drying up residential wells by vineyards all over the county. I would like to suggest that commercial agricultural water wells should be needed and charged an appropriate extraction fee based on profit from export of grapes, wine, and any food from the county. This could help the county fund the infrastructure needed to be in place to accommodate and help accelerate future expected residential and agricultural growths, compensate county residents whom have lost use of their wells due to agricultural development, and to conserve groundwater. Perched 2,200 feet on top of a mountain, their amplified music events will echo across our once quiet and peaceful valley. Their parking lot lights will light up the night sky, obliterating stalks. There is still time to stop this terrible project's tracks, avoid future misappropriation and degradation of land use, and pass some local and state laws to protect people's lives. If this project can't be stopped, the community needs Wild Diamond Vineyards to be organic and biodynamic and not expose the residents of Hidden Valley to the hazards of pesticides and herbicides used in commercial, non-organic agriculture. Additional agricultural, industrial, and commercial traffic congestion on our narrow country roads will destroy all of the reasons we chose to live in this once pristine rural county. The proposed expansion of acreage of vineyards and processing facility and an event center is an assault on our community in so many ways in addition to the consequences of the loss of the natural environment. I would hope that our Planning Commission will be more interested in planning for the future rather than immediate revenue gains. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may take your Lake County ag commissioner. Agriculture last year was over $100 million. Arguably was the biggest industry in the county, or maybe it's recreation, I'm not sure which. Pesticides are regulated closer in any other state than California. We have rules and regulations of the In Gang on how to prevent pesticide incidences. We're the only state in the whole country that has ag commissioners that individually handle each county. Every other state, you have districts that are several hundred miles, thousands of miles, that there's one person that does pesticides. Organic involves more pesticides than less. If you want pesticide use, go organic, because you will have sulfur applications, testing sulfur, once every 14 days. Okay? I don't find Roundup, there is no evidence that I know of that Roundup is acarcinogen. One UN, one UN committee said it was. It has not been reproduced yet. I'm not saying it doesn't ever, the evidence is not there at this time. If it was, the state would make it a proxy 65th chemical, and it's not. And they're not in any bakery to make it on the list. Wine grapes is agriculture, okay? So I think it's kind of scattered, but I just can't remember all the comments. Oh, and by the way, I would think it's like one out of four jobs. If you have one ag job, it generates four more jobs. So anyway. Thank you very much, Dan. Who else?
Good afternoon, I'm Vern LaShion, I'm part of the project team for Wild Diamond. My background is fire, and I was asked by, I believe, county staff to be here just in case there's any issues related to fire here to respond. My background is, I've got over 40 years of experience. My last full-time job was Fire Chief for Sonoma County, and I'm a fire marshal. So I've a little time to, you know, to stand and protest when the county's out. So I'll be able to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our comments? That'll close the public hearing.
My name's Elizabeth Montgomery. I live in Hidden Valley Lake, about a half mile from Wild Diamond Vineyards. And I've submitted very detailed written comments, so I'm going to be brief right now. Wild Diamond Vineyard is a wolf in sheep's clothing. Why is Wild Diamond Vineyard a wolf in sheep's clothing? Because it wants to prey upon the resources of Hidden Valley that tries to disguise itself as bringing us economic benefits. It doesn't care about its impacts on residents, which are already happening. You have ample documentation of existing impacts from this development. Wild Diamond is a wolf because it wants to pump unlimited water out of a fragile volcanic aquifer. It doesn't want to do the proper hydrological studies. Wild Diamond is a wolf because it wants to spray a dozen different poisons into our air, water, and soil. And it doesn't want to even give us notice of such spraying, probably because it doesn't want to remind us that it is constantly applying toxic substances in close proximity to our homes on windy mountain ridge. We appear to talk about a big fat environmental impact report, a report which says on every page, Wild Diamond is a sheep. But once you delve into this report, once you talk to some knowledgeable people, you can recognize that this report is just sheep's clothing, not a serious document. Wild Diamond is still a wolf, an ever bigger wolf, a greedier wolf, definitely a noisier and more dangerous wolf. We see tens of thousands of dollars spent on a slick attorney, a shark in sheep's clothing with a pleasant manner, but some dirty tricks. But wait, even the Sierra Club says Wild Diamond is a sheep, right? No, Wild Diamond violates a host of Sierra Club principles regarding agriculture. We have to ask if Victoria Brandon's motivations have anything to do with the generous campaign contributions she received in 2012 from Wild Diamond's Clay Shannon. She's really dragged Sierra Club's name through the mud by promoting in the paper this project. I'm sorry that there are many people not here today. Some of their remarks have been lost to the public record. Greg McLaren got up in Middletown on March 31st at a public scoping meeting. He lives right next to Jennifer Roldan. He has the longest border with Wild Diamond Vineyard. He knows a lot about what's going on there. He's been confined for weeks at a time to his home. First due to smoke from burning cleared vegetation, and then from pesticide drift. He's very clear about all this. Now, we were told at that meeting that there was a court record present. And we're given the impression that that record, that transcript, was going to be part of the public record and available to us. But it turns out that that transcript is owned by Tina Wallace, the attorney for Wild Diamond, and that she's decided, as quote, "part of her legal strategy" not to release it. It's hard for people to get up here in the middle of the day and spend hours and hours waiting for a hearing. So I really hope that those comments will be recovered. Vee Miller is not here. Her pond dried up long ago. She thinks it's due to Wild Diamond. She thinks this is a hopeless proceeding because she's given up on the county. Tim and Sheila LePointe live right next to Jennifer Roldan. They're the ones that are trucking water in. They don't feel that there's any point in coming here and talking about it because they feel like this is a done deal. Honestly, I wrote some very harsh remarks that I'm not going to read because I'm hoping that you'll listen to us this time around. Many of the things we said last time we appeared before you have been borne out, and you voted 5 to 0 to go the other direction. So I'll save my harshness. It's very important to me that we get to continue this for public comment on the 25th. We've had one email from Joshua saying that the public comment would be allowed on the 25th, and we've had one email from Peggy saying that it might not. So I got the email from Joshua. I told people that I thought there would be a chance that they wouldn't have to wait for hours, that they came on the 25th to testify. So I really hope that there will be public comment allowed on the 25th. You know, I don't know what's up with our ag commissioner. The state of California just made a determination about the carcinogenicity of glyphosate. So I hope we'll look into that. They're already, they aren't spraying sulfur every 14 days, according to Greg McLaren, who's keeping a diary of it, so I don't think we're too worried about facing that. Down the road, we have Six Sigma using organic practices. They actually use styloid oil for fungus management. So those of us who live nearby would be happy to have an organic vineyard despite what the ag commissioner may be saying about the choice of pesticide. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment. Any questions for staff, or anyone else closing comments?
Any questions? Are you closing it for today, or keeping it open for next year?
I will keep, close it for today. Have to end it sometime.
You know, you were closing it entirely.
No, entirely, no.
Are you clear for the record?
Yeah, please, thank you.
So my question is to wait until next year?
All right. Any other comments, sir? Okay, I will close this out for the day. And so it's up to that meeting September 8th, correct?
September, August 25th.
August 25th, sorry about that. Yes, and then September 8th. Yes, thank you. All right, Rick.
Thank you for all of us being here and listening to us.